I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank everyone for coming out tonight and those participating online. Appreciate you. Couple of announcements. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, November 12th, 2024, right here in the commission chambers. All city offices will be closed Monday, November 11th in honor of Veterans Day. And Mr. Messis, I think we have an introduction of new employees?
Yes, I'd like to first call our director of the Aquatic Center and Recreation, JR Aldereta, to the stand.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to come here. First of all, I'd like to start off with thanking Ms. Jaden Walton. She's, her last day is the 20th, I believe, and she worked for, was at the visitor center for three and a half years. I know she's going to continue with her studies to become a teacher, so, but I'd like to thank her publicly for working there and covering the visitor centers for three and a half years. So, thank you, Jade, and she's not here, but, you know, put it out there. Next, I'd like to welcome our new staff at the visitor center. We have Ms. Teri Sagata, and we have Ms. Suzette Duranberg, and then Ms. Donna Clausen. If you guys could stand up.
Don't be shy.
Yeah, don't be shy. Come on up.
Don't be shy. Come up there.
Donna and Teri both started off as volunteers, and Teri has been helping. Before she got hired, helped out with the volunteers. And we went from like maybe three volunteers, four volunteers, and I think we're probably around eight now, somewhere around there.
And we've got two more coming on.
And a couple more coming on, so that's picking up. So, you know, I think we're heading in the right direction with the visitor center. There's still got to be, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done there, so, but we're getting there. And now that we've got a staff to take care of things seven days a week, it's, it's going to be a lot easier. But thank you, guys, for allowing me to hire three people and getting it done.
We're happy.
We thank you. Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
And appreciate everything you've done, JR stepping in, and Ms. Walton for her service. So, please tell her that we appreciate that service.
Sure.
You're welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Mayor, Commission, I would like to call Jaden Welch forward.
Mayor, Commission. So, proud to announce our new community and economic development director, Cynthia Molina. She joins us from Star Valley, Wyoming. And Cynthia is a distinguished MBA graduate from the Director's School of Management at Claremont Colleges. In addition to her academic achievements, she possesses valuable experience in broadcasting and media content development. She's recognized for her expertise as a data-driven specialist in jump-starting, turning around, and transforming organizations. Cynthia has fully embraced the efficiencies brought on by the rise of artificial intelligence and following a successful tenure in various corporate leadership positions. She's eager to take on new challenges and contribute to the revitalization of rural America, and we're thrilled to have her as a part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't even begin to tell you what a pleasure it is to be here in front of all of you and to be invited to be a part of your community. I really looked far and wide for this type of opportunity. I am fully convinced this community has tremendous potential and potential that can be instructive for other communities as well. So, the work that I've already seen that all of you have done in developing a long-range plan and your approach to involving the community and all of your decision-making was very impressive to me. And I look forward to taking this experience from other areas here and also leaving behind experiences that are not relevant here. So, I'll be taking my initial time to learn about the culture of this community, even more about the history and the potential. And it'll be a tremendous honor to be able to serve you and those you serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Alrighty. Item five, committee reports from Commissioners. Commissioner Honeyfield. Commissioner Jacamo.
Arthur Johnson Memorial Library is not scheduled for meeting this month, and our PS building is scheduled for town, uh, on the meeting October 28th, which is next Monday.
Yep. Okay. Mayor Broten.
Of course. The reports. Okay. The Water Board met October 15th, and I attended along with Commissioner Schuster. Were you, were you not there at all? Oh, that's right.
No, I had eye surgery, and so I wasn't back from.
I always just assume that you're there. So, shoot, you weren't there. Okay. Well, good thing I wrote down some notes.
That's right.
Okay. Lake Malloya is three feet below the spillway. Filter plant production in September was 27 million gallons with a peak flow of 2.23 million gallons per day. As of the meeting, water usage was slowing down as we approached winter months, and we're close, closer to about 1.1 million gallons a day average. The Simron System Phase One continues to experience communication issues. We discussed strategies to get that project complete, including any potential action we could take. But it looks like because of the state price agreement, kind of our hands are tied there, but they're still going to do their best because it's, it's getting really frustrating at this point. The New Sledge Field project continues. The South Birm is complete, and they're working on the North Birm next. We approved the procurement policy. We're still waiting on the state to comment on the city's water conservation plan. Divers were down, were in town that week to start the three million gallon tank, storage tank assessment project. The Lake Malloya Dam inspection will be October 30th. Recently, they had some crack sealing done. We discussed the timing of hydrant testing in the next two years, preferably, definitely when Lake Malloya is spilling. And we approved a pay increase for the general manager, which had been budgeted but not approved. On September 27th, I attended a virtual meeting for the National Park Service Rivers Trails and Conservation Assistance Technical Grant Meeting. Jason Phillips was identified as the project lead. I believe the GIS park mapping was successful, which was done here in town on October 1st. Next week, we have a two-day in-person meeting planned on the 30th and 31st with park visits, city staff visioning, and a hike of Climax Canyon to discuss improvements potentially to the trailhead or to that area. And then probably in the new year, we'll have a public input process for park planning throughout the city. Kind of fun. I've had several communications with and meetings with the Nature Conservancy over the last month regarding Bartlett Mesa Ranch and the Buck Ridge Ranch purchases. I was asked to be part of some marketing materials that involves their conservation work around Raton and talk about what those lands could mean for our community. So, October 11th, I met a film crew at Sunrise on top of Bartlett Mesa from Fauna Creative, and they interviewed me about how the purchase came about, my own connection to the outdoors and the land, and the potential impact those properties would have on our economic development. I got to hike and explore a little on the Buck Ridge Ranch property, which was absolutely stunning, beautiful views of town. I learned quite a bit, and I got to meet and chat with Brad Corey, who works with the Southern High Plains Initiative for the Nature Conservancy, which encompasses six different states and over 70 million acres of land, a lot of it with an emphasis on watershed, clean watershed. And Raton is the furthest west that he works with in that region. And then on the 15th, I was invited to speak at the Nature Conservancy Staff Retreat that they had here in town at the Best Western. It was kind of a conversational interview where the staff were able to ask me about my own background in the outdoors, along with our history in Raton, our economy, and the impact of the properties. The Nature Conservancy very much wants all the Commissioners to come up to the properties and look at the maps as, as you're standing there and kind of envision everything and see the scope of the project with the bird's eye view. So, they asked me to coordinate something that we can have that opportunity and in the future to find a time for a public visit at some point as well. So, we'll need to kind of, I'll go through our city manager and kind of figure that out for us. After several years of discussing the project, in theory, it was great to be up there seeing the vision. It made it feel very real, and it was incredible, the connectivity for a biking hiking trail from town through Buck Ridge Ranch to Bartlett Mesa and then to Sugary Canyon is very much in the works and very possible, but probably still a couple of years away as all the land ownership gets settled and things would have to be developed. But it's, it's that connection we've been looking for that's off the road that could be this awesome active way to get out to the park. Along with many of you, I attended the Economic Development Summit and Council of Governments on October 16th and 17th. A couple of quick things that stood out to me. One thing was the potential for free trails planning through NMDOT RTP, On-Call Planning Services, and potential for other planning assistance through college programs. There were many great presentations. It's hard to even pick one. There was a whole lot of information locally and regionally, workforce, transportation, housing, ground field, energy. I do want to just say that Wednesday evening's downtown business crawl and the meet and greet with the Pecorice Pueblo is a lot of fun. Thank you to everyone who worked so hard on the entire event, from every city staff member to Ann. I just appreciate you and also all the businesses that supported it and stayed open as well on Wednesday night. The catering from K-Bobs, just a lot of amazing players in there. Although the Ports to Plains Board did not meet this month, Lauren Gardunio, president and CEO, had a presentation at the Economic Development Summit. I'm happy to say he's working with New Mexico DOT, who will be doing the alignment and planning study for the whole corridor and not just Clayton, which is really exciting, even if we don't get the congressionally-directed spending money. So, we are going to get some planning going that will probably start in our area. I don't know if they're starting with Clayton first, but it'll be next spring and summer. It's essential that he, he told us, what they're going to do is look at the alignment of 8764 now and see if that's the best alignment for the interstate upgrade or if it should align in some other way. It's important that we get a good understanding of what that footprint might look like for economic development in the area, as well as making sure that we don't get completely bypassed by the traffic. We still want our traveling public to be able to come in and spend money in Raton. Our next meeting for Ports to Plains is December 4th on Zoom. North Central Mexico Development District didn't meet, but they were also at the summit and had a lot to share regarding programs they sponsor. Our next meeting is November 21st in Santa Fe, and I was unable to attend the Municipal League Board meeting on October 4th due to a conflict. And that's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Schuster.
Very good. Well, as noted, I was not at the Water Board. I did have an eye surgery. So, I wasn't, I was out of town for that. And Commissioner Honeyfield is being humble. He was at the Economic Development Summit and Council of Governments both days. On the 17th, those were the 16th and 17th. The 17th, I was honored to be able to host and facilitate the discussion on healthcare, where we were able to discuss, you know, not just deficits in healthcare in this region, but assets, because we often get so wrapped up in deficits that we forget to start talking about the assets we have. And I had to give credit to Barbara Neary, who used to work at the hospital. She's retired, but she helped me pull together some statistics on, on, you know, what, what our region looks like compared to other rural areas and we're basically the same as the rest of rural America. There are the same kind of deficits happening. There's fewer, there's a higher ratio of primary care providers to, to patients than there is in rural, an urban setting where there's much lower ratios, so there's higher burnout. So, we tend to cycle through those primary care providers. And of course, specialists need specialty equipment, and that's, that's one of the things we miss, is the access to specialty equipment for specialists. So, it leaves many of us having to travel to get that healthcare. But anyway, I felt like it was a good, both, both the Economic Development Summit and the Council of Governments were both very informative. I was able to be there most of both days, but not the entire time. So, I was glad Commissioner Chatterley and Honeyfield were both there. Between us, I think we hit everything.
Alrighty. Alright, for myself, I will be attending this next, excuse me, next Wednesday and Thursday in New Mexico, New Mexico. Let's start again. North Central Mexico Economic Development District Executive Board Meeting and their strategic planning retreat. I'll be participating in that. On October 4th, I did attend the New Mexico Municipal League Board Meeting. Couple of the things that we talked about were legislative priorities. Two of them that I wanted to bring up, one was regarding EPR requests. You know, right now, pretty much anyone can come in for information, make an EPR request and get it. And it puts a burden on our community staffs and everything. What the league is wanting to focus on is to get, and what we're finding now, these huge companies that are data collecting companies are just making requests so, because they can get the information for a lot free, a lot cheaper than having to pay for it, making requests for all kinds of things, going back many years, data mining, just trying to find out information. So, they're trying to put together some legislation that will limit that, also put a statute of limitations on how far back you can go back for data. Be interesting to see how far that goes and also to make it more specific. Instead of just coming in and saying you wanted because you wanted, try to direct it wide, you know, make it for a purpose. So, that's going to be presented. And the other one that we've been kind of battling for about the last four or five years is legislation on preemption. Having the government, the state government, not tell the communities what they can and can't do, especially as far as our GRT, how we designate that and develop that. So, they're looking at doing that. And then we talked about on the self-insurers fund side, training available for our, all of our police forces in the state. It was pretty cool. They now have three units or two units, two mobile units that go out and basically it's virtual training, and you wear the glasses and all that, and they put you in any situation and train the officers that way. And it's, it's really realistic. They used an example. They went to a community, I'm not going to name the community, but they went to a community and asked for 10 citizens from the community to participate in the training. And they set up a situation where an individual was shot by the officers, and it was very controversial. Everybody's saying, why did you shoot the officers? They put these 10 citizens in that situation. Nine out of 10 shot the individual, just like the police did, and they did it in under 60 seconds. So, that tells you, you know, you can see it on the news and think, well, why did they do that? You don't know the situation. And then they put it in, another one where they, the outcome was favorable. Nobody was shot, but seven out of those 10 still shot the individual. So, it just goes to tell you that police officers are under a mount of pressure when they're in these situations. So, it was, it was pretty cool. But anyway, this training is available to all police forces. It's free, and they will come to your site, set it up wherever you need to go, and, and do it. So, something that they're doing for certification and stuff like that. So, it was pretty cool. That was, that was pretty interesting. What else coming up? I think that's about it. Was unfortunately, I was not able to attend the summit last week. We have a schedule change, but I'm glad everyone else was able to attend. I understand it was a great success. So, congratulations. Thanks, Ann, for putting it together and everything. I heard nothing but great things about it. So, cool. Alrighty, so let's move on to the business side. Item 7A, deliberate and act on approval of the October 8th, 2024 regular meeting minutes and the October 11th, 2024 special meeting minutes.
Point of order. We missed items from citizens present.
Did we? Okay, let's back up one. Maybe we'll go to items from citizens present.
Not to harp on the summit, but if you'll bear with me a minute, I just really want to thank some people. You know, it was many, many, many months in the planning, and there is a lot of people. So, I just, of course, want to thank everybody who helped out, and I really hope not to miss anybody. But, you know, there were a lot of people that people haven't mentioned or didn't know that helped. Leonard, of course, over at the Convention Center was a tremendous help setting up, cleaning up, you know, clearing out the garbages in, at the lunchtime and everything. He was amazing help. Jose, who set up all of the AV equipment and also helped me clean up everything. Of course, the, you know, Better City staff that flew down here from Utah to help out with the event as well. And Michael Lann, who has to process payments and sponsorships and deal with the invoices and all that, just to thank her. And of course, the ED partners like Raton Main Street and the Center for Community Invasion and Grow Raton, who helped, you know, fill up the swag bags and, you know, did all of that with me, also processed the payments for the artwork. And of course, Brenda helped me get some of the artwork from the gallery, which was really great. And so, I mean, we sold, I think, I mean, almost, one artist I know got almost $350, and another, and then there was several other artists. She didn't tell me how much they made from the gallery, but it was probably close to $1,000 of local artwork that was sold. So, that was really fabulous. Of course, all of the, you know, the artists that contributed to the work, the businesses, you know, everyone was so generous, from Dulces Encantados to, you know, K-Bobs, who did all the catering, Bruno's, who at the last minute baked a 5 million pizzas for the Pecorice. You know, everyone, you know, at Colfax, El Cellar, they brought on extra staff to help out at that event. So, everyone just really contributed. The art crawl, I mean, sorry, the business crawl, the businesses that stayed open until 7 o'clock, like Raton Adventure Center, Mama Kay's, the heirloom shop, I think, like in the little gift shops and stuff that are on Second, the Rat Pack, and some of those shops also stayed open late. So, I just want to thank them as well. And then, of course, the city staff that participated, the city commissioners who participated and, you know, hosted panels. I know that was a lot of extra time that you guys had to put that together. So, thank you for that. To everyone who came, who participated in any way, I just really want to thank them. And of course, to our city manager, who did a fantastic job leading the whole thing, emceeing the whole event, and just carried that needle through out the whole event. So, anyway, it was really great, and I just wanted to thank everybody who participated.
Thank you. I think what I missed the most was the candy. It was awesome last year. Those carmelos are awesome. Alright, can we move to item 7 now? Alright. 7A, deliberate and act on approval of October 8th, 2024 regular meeting minutes and October 11th, 2024 special meeting minutes. They are in your packet. If there are no additions or corrections, they would stand approved as presented? Any questions, comments? Found none, so they would stand approved as presented. Item B, discussion on the 2025 Legislative Capital Outlay Priorities. Mr. Messis. Mayor, Commission, it is a time of year to submit our legislative capital priorities. The deputy city manager and I, in collaboration with the chief of staff and city engineer, submit the following list. You may add, remove an item, or change priority, or the amount. There are six items on this list. The first is Lake Malloya Dam Safety Improvements for $30 million. The second is the Animal Shelter Replacement for $1 million. The third is Solid Waste Equipment for $200,000. The fourth is Storm Drainage Improvements for $500,000. The fifth is a Monument Sign for $150,000, and the sixth is Convention Center Improvements for $500,000. Total request $32,350,000. And again, you may add, remove, change priority, change amount, whatever you wish. Any comments, questions?
I had a question, Mr. Mayor, if I can. I was just looking at last year's from my other notes, and we had the multimodal depot renovation on there as our third on that, on last year's. And I just was curious, have we already sourced other funding? We're working on other funding sources for that.
We're working on other funding sources. We don't have the funding sources yet, but we feel fairly confident that they will be coming through. And we did, like, on last year's list, we had the solar ray, but we secured other funding for that. So, that's why there was these changes.
So, will the depot stay on just like low priority?
Lower priority, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
One question I have, I guess, on number six, the Convention Center improvements. I know we're talking about the elevator there. What else? We did receive funding for that. The, the place needs a lot of improvements, everything from carpeting to furniture to the roof, HVAC. The only thing really right now that we're not worried about is the elevator, because we did get funding for that. But everything else still stands. Okay. You know, I've put it on my wish list that we look into a new convention center. Absolutely. I think what we're using right now.
It's not really a convention center.
Not really a convention center. But, you know, I'm, I'm not saying we can't do this, but I'm just saying, you know, I think that's something we could look into.
That'd be a great addition to the list, a new convention center. Not, maybe not in the top priorities, but in the future.
No. I mean, I think we start looking at it and seeing what we're thinking. Cost-wise, we're probably looking around the eight to $10 million. You know, that's probably conservative. I'm, I'm thinking of the, the new senior center they built in Clovis. It's a 10,000 square foot building, and they, it was 8.6 million. And it could easily be a convention center, the way it's made out. But, yeah. Just, just throwing that out there.
Just saying.
Just saying. Another thing we might. It's Christmas time. Well, one thing we also could consider is Phase Two of the Recreation Center incorporating some convention center facilities with, you know, expanding the Recreation Center as well, killing two birds with one stone. Sure. I don't know if the Rec Center on Phase Two was a brand new senior center. Just throwing that out there. I don't know why I think about senior centers, but I do. Just throwing that out there as well. The building that they're in now has, has worked well, but there is going to be a time, it's got considerable structural issues right now. In fact, I need to take Jaden down there one of these mornings and show him some of the stuff. In fact, I need to take Jayden down there one of these mornings and show him some of the stuff. Just throw on those out there.
Isn't that, um, convention center used for senior activities a lot?
Some of it is, yeah, but they've got a really nice facility, senior facility.
Oh, do they?
Yeah.
Well, the convention center is really nice.
It is, it is. Uh, those are just my thoughts.
But I, I like the list, I like what's on there.
Yeah, it's a good list.
Any other questions, comments?
So I will move...
Oh, we don't need to approve of...
It's just discussion.
Nope, you have somebody in my phone.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Ann, yes, absolutely. No, absolutely.
I just wanted to, you know, just, 'cause I was involved in writing all these grants this last year, and, um, also the congressional directed spending requests, that we make sure, because some of the items, like, for example, the fire emergency facility, the pedestrian bridge, those things weren't on the ICAP last year, and those are questions that are asked when I write grants or do the congressionally directed spending requests. So just throwing it out there, like, if there are things that you're thinking we for sure wanna ask again, we might wanna consider including them in the ICAP, just so they see it's a community priority and that it's, you know, publicly voted on or whatever, like, brought to the attention of the public.
That's a good point, yeah. Anything that works, the costing money, uh, needs to be on the list. All right. Anybody else? All right. Moving on, item C, deliberate an act on the Mosca Designs quote, "For a recreation of the nineteen forties Garland and Lights Christmas display at the Schuler Theater." Mr. Mestes.
Um, Mayor Commission, the management of the Schuler Theater has requested seven thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-five cents for a decoration set set on a nineteen forties Garland and Light display. Um, unfortunately, the city recommends rejecting this bid for several technical reasons. First, since this, since this purchase is over one thousand dollars, we need to go through a procurement process and are unable to sole source this purchase. Second, we only have budgeted carpet replacement and electrical work at the theater this year and appear to be over budget on both. Third, this is a candidate for Lodger's Tax Non-Promotional Fund, uh, where we're already thousands of dollars over budget. And finally, as you're aware, we have a lot of capital improvements needed for the visitor's center, convention center, depot inspection, and inspections at, um, the Schuler. I guess here to counter me is Billy.
Well, I'll give a presentation here, yes. Mr. Mayor Commission. Do this.
Thank you, sir.
So I am Bill DeHuddy with the Schuler Restoration Commission.
Thank you, sir.
Our mission is to preserve and continue the restoration of the Schuler Theater, to create improved facilities, to market and operate the Schuler Theater on behalf of the City of Raton as a performing arts venue and a tourist attraction. So there's the key, the crux of it. Uh, we've been working on a lot of projects. We have a lot of foundations, organizations, businesses, individuals who help the Schuler Theater. They all love us, and you love us too, we know that. So, uh, for about three years now, the Schuler Restoration has said, man, Christmas is such a good time of year in Raton. Wouldn't it be nice to have some decorations on the Schuler Theater? So I'm going to give you a state-of-the-art audio video presentation, state-of-the-art nineteen forties. So this is what, if it will cooperate, this is what the Schuler Theater looked like, Christmas decorations nineteen forty-one. So I don't think the tree will ever come back, but maybe a tree above the, uh, the street.
Billy, could you show the camera?
Building to building, sure. This is kind of a, a dream of the Schuler Restoration Commission. Uh, the Schuler has undertaken to order the Garland, and you have a picture of what the rendition is, uh, the newer version. It's not quite as fancy with the crisscross Garland, but it is very, very nice. And in addition, uh, there are wreaths on each of the windows downstairs. So each of the nine windows would have a nice big wreath on the bottom. So we have gone ahead and we dove into it. Uh, we talked with Michael Ann, oh, I guess it's been three months ago, two, three months ago, uh, as, asking about this. Michael Ann said, well, possibly for some non-promotional money, but Michael Ann, again, echoed what you said, you know, we're, uh, we're not in, uh, great, uh, abundance of any extra cash as far as the Lodger's Tax bill. So we're going to make a presentation to the actual Lodger's Tax at their next meeting. Please put us on the agenda, and, uh, and go from there. So we have ordered, we, uh, had to pay fifty percent down, so ten thousand six hundred dollars. So we have about, uh, fifty-two hundred dollars, something like that, that we have already committed Schuler Restoration funds. So, uh, we're gonna do it one way or the other. We're going to either do fundraisers, uh, we're going to, uh, go into our reserve funds, uh, we're going to twist your arms and beg, uh, and, and hopefully we can get a little bit of money. Not hopeful, seventy-six hundred. When I had talked to Michael Ann earlier, that was what we thought it was gonna cost, was about seventy-six hundred. Shipping, uh, everything has gone up. So again, we're at about ten-six for that. It's on its way. I've talked to RPS and to Dave Piancino and to Jean Diabaza, the line superintendent. They're ready to put it up. They, they have an idea and a plan, and they said, yeah, let's do it. So we have them waiting on board. We should get it in the next few days. We weren't sure how long it was gonna take to ship, uh, that we were told, you know, six to eight weeks, but it's gonna be more like four weeks. So it's on its way, and, uh, any consideration from the city would be very much appreciated. Any questions?
Questions?
Billy, if, if the city is not able to help, where do people send donations? Or how, how is it best to give you money for this project?
Schuler Restoration Commission Incorporated is the, the best way. P.O. Box six thirty-eight. And so we'll, during this Christmas time, we'll open up that channel and make it, uh, available for people. It's gonna be up, and so, uh, they're, they're gonna love it. You're gonna love it. The city's gonna love it.
So, Bill, and you might think about coming to the RPS meeting Monday. I know that, uh, our current electric contract gives us some money to help the community out. That's how we bought the new scoreboards for the Little League. I don't know if that funding is available this year, but I believe it was around a thousand dollars, fifteen hundred dollars, somewhere in there. I think this would apply for, or would meet the needs for that. I talked to Kathy, uh, before. I think it's a good idea, I, I like the whole concept. My, my big concern is that what prevents another organization coming to us saying, well, we want our lights upgraded for our display?
It's not a city building, that's the only, that would be my only comeback to it.
No, that's true, but I, but it would still...
Procurement.
Yeah, they would still open the doors to that.
Okay, all right. Uh, and then, like I said, we'll be on the speakers bureau, we'll come to RPS, uh, next Lodger's Tax Committee meeting, et cetera. So we're, we're gonna get it done.
Excuse me, uh, am I understanding correctly, you don't really need, you don't need seven thousand, seven thousand six hundred and seventy-four, you need five thousand something?
Well, the, the total cost is ten thousand six hundred dollars. So we have paid a fifty percent, uh, down payment.
But you're hoping to get some of that?
Hoping to get, yes.
I understand.
All of that would be great, but, you know, we, we're not in a perfect world, so.
Yeah, I think I have to agree, we'd love to be able to do this, but...
And the, and the Schuler Restoration Commission realized that. I mean, we just, it needs to be done, it should be done. Uh, this will help our downtown, uh, look better, feel better, and especially around Christmas time. It's a very nice time of year for the city of Raton, really is.
How, uh, Mr. Mestes, how, how far along are we on the remodel? I mean, timeline is, where, how far out are we to finalizing that?
For the Schuler?
Yes.
Uh, we still have some, I think, if you wouldn't mind if I can call Jayden for it, we still have some, uh, electrical work to do, carpet work to do, and, um, I also want to have the balcony inspected, and, um, there's some structural things that I wanna have looked at. Uh, we haven't budgeted those yet, but we're gonna budget those coming up. Um, like, for example, I don't think the balcony's ever been inspected, as far as I know. Uh, and, you know, we just wanna make sure that, you know, the building is structurally sound, whether it's plumbing, electrical, structure, you know, it, it's an important landmark, and we need to do everything to keep it.
So, we'll go ahead.
Just an update on the carpet. Uh, Schuler Restoration Commission kinda threw a kibosh in that whole thing. It's been several months. Uh, what had been contracted and what had been proposed for the Schuler Theater was the squares, the carpet squares. And so we were given the option of maybe a blue or, you know, it, it, it just was not the Schuler Theater. It was not, it was like a, a Walmart, and, and we're, we're a palace. So the Schuler went into negotiations, or we talked with Carpet One, who had the contract for laying the carpet or for the carpet in the theater. We've been back and forth and back and forth, and I could give you my, uh, my visual presentation on what we decided, but it's a more regal thing. And I just tried to contact, uh, her name, Gutierrez, with Carpet One today, did not get a response. So that is in the works right now. And again, uh, if the Schuler Restoration has to find some sort of supplement to get that done, it needs to get done, so. Hopefully, we'll get some sort of an answer in the next couple of weeks or before next year, next fiscal year.
Uh, Jayden, the electrical changeup, how close are they to being on budget?
So how close are they to being on budget? So that's where we're at right now, basically, is, um, the electrical plans are all ready to go out for bid, but the engineer's estimate came in something about double, uh, what we have the, in funding for.
Double, is that maybe thousands?
Two fifty to three hundred thousand over budget. And so, um, I'm gonna be working with Michael Ann to try to figure out how we can bridge that gap without having to dip into general funds. We kind of all agree that, I mean, it's cloth wiring, you, you, you gotta do the whole project. And, um, that, once you start touching it, there are code requirements that you have to meet. You, you can't really slice and dice this project. And so, uh, we really need to know what our funding strategy's gonna be to make up that shortfall. So I have postponed going out for bid for that reason.
You, from, with your background, do you think that engineer's estimate is accurate? Or are they being a little cautious?
I think they're being a little cautious, potentially. I think it'll come in below that estimate, but they, they had, um, their estimate was something on the order of four hundred and eighty K plus NMGRT plus an eighty K, um, what do they call that, like contingency? And so, um...
Because Billy, when was the last upgrade in what was upgraded? Because wasn't some of the electric for the stage lighting that changed?
We have a lighting system, so that's, but the same wiring is, is essentially there.
Feeding it.
Yeah. Um, we were shut down, what, eight, eight years ago, seven, eight years ago, because of many code violations. There was an upgrade then, and we, we were up to code, and since then, I don't think anything has really been done. Uh, although Tim Bird has added some circuits backstage. We were popping breakers, uh, when we had a, a group in drawing a lot of power. So he brought in some, uh, power from outside, and we've got some extra circuits there. And we do have a two hundred and twenty volt also. And RPS also gave us, uh, dock power for, uh, RVs and buses that they, uh, installed for the Gate City Music Festival, for Lori Morgan's bus, so, you know. But, but overall, the guts, yeah.
Inside role.
Yeah. Some ways, I wish we could go back to the nineteen forties, so.
All right.
So I just wanna say thank you again for your support of the Schuler Theater, the Schuler Restoration Commission. We had the Raton Pass Film Fest last Saturday. Ah, yeah, it was a soggy Raton Pass Film Fest, but we had fairly decent attendance. We had about forty-five fifty for the actual movie Saturday afternoon. Uh, Ann was there with the youth film, uh, festival, the showcase, and that, and that was well attended, and the kids showed very well. That night, not so much. Yeah, we only had, uh, probably a dozen, and El Raton didn't have many, so. But not to be deterred, we're going to do it next year bigger and better. So the Raton Pass Film Fest is gonna be a two-day event next year, and it's gonna celebrate Billy the Kid, too, so we have some special things coming in, uh, and have, uh, big, big plans for that. Coming up tomorrow night, uh, it's Beetlejuice, I'm only gonna say it once. And it is Classic Night at the Movies, which is free admission, and the donations go to the Knights of Columbus, another one of our organizations helping people for their Thanksgiving certificate program. Saturday night invites you to Letters from Home, Raton Arts Council. Uh, they've got a great series, they always do. This is a song and dance tribute to America and our servicemen and women, so the Greatest Generation, Korean War, Vietnam War, et cetera, a lot of that music, tap dancing, et cetera, so. And twenty bucks, some of us fifteen dollars for seniors, won't point any fingers, but a better entertainment value cannot be found anywhere. Uh, youth art show, or the youth show, Santa Fe Trail Schools, that's November first, second, and third. It's called Witch's Brew. Uh, and then up in, and that, by the way, they're going to partner with One Eleven Park, as a matter of fact. Uh, Witch's Brew is dealing with witches who can't make their, uh, their potions anymore, so they, uh, find a young barista, a young recruit. So it, it all fits in. Uh, and that's November second and, uh, November third, this Sunday. Coming for Raton Arts Council, it is Floyd Kramer's grandson, Jason Coleman, with Last Date. So it's a tribute to Floyd Kramer, and it's a multimedia presentation. So he'll play along with his grandpa, uh, kinda like Natalie Cole in Nat Cole, kinda thing. And that's November fifteenth. Uh, Raton Police Officers Association, November twentieth, Classic Night at the Movies. Photos with Santa, Raton Humane Society, November thirtieth. I'm, I'm almost through December. Classic night, it's, uh, the Veterans Park at Legion. Gilbert San Roman and J.R. Alderetti, we've got that beautiful Veterans Park at Legion, and it needs new flags. So we're going to do a classic night on December fourth, right before Pearl Harbor Day. December sixth, right before... December 6th, right before Pearl Harbor Day, Michael Martin Murphy, Cowboy Christmas. So we're looking forward to that, and tickets will go on sale very quickly. Again, that's Schuler Restoration with the help of the Wyatt Foundation. Thank you again to our foundations. It just wouldn't happen, things wouldn't happen without them. And then to end December, it's going to be Christmas Carol. The tradition is back, December 19, 2021 and 22. Thank you very much for your support and your attendance. We'll see you at the Schuler. Can you hang on just for a few minutes?
Sure.
We'll be back.
Back to the business at hand here, we are roughly looking a little over $5,600 in, somewhere in that area?
Yeah, we give a little.
Yeah, okay.
And that's still over procurement?
Yeah, I mean, we'd still have to go through.
We'd have to figure out where.
They've already ordered, so I mean, our hands are kind of tied.
Question, if the city could just give money, if we own the ornaments, if it's the city's property?
Oh, yeah.
Shared ownership?
No, it's the city's, anything the Schuler Restoration does, all of those improvements. So we just need more weight for the city? It moves slow sometimes.
Yeah, ask forgiveness than permission.
But I mean, for us, you know, with city funds, there's still a procurement issue for us.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's what makes it difficult for us. Like the city manager said, it can't be a sole-source purchase. I don't know. I just have the opinion it's not worth getting an audit finding over Christmas decorations, but.
What did you say? We just need about 70, 60 to 70 people to donate $100?
Yeah, I mean, if you get 70 people to donate $100, there it is. Well, we need a motion of some kind.
I would motion to table that item, then it won't come up again. So table item C, the Mosca Designs quote for recreation, recreation of the 1940s garland and lights Christmas display at the Schuler.
We have motion and second to table item C. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, deliberate an act on planning and zoning commission recommendation for a lot split at 200 Canyon Drive and 208 Canyon Drive. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, we have a request for a subdivision of property from Santana Frank, the personal representative of the Richard Kilb Estate, located at 200 and 208 Canyon Drive in the city. Raton Water Works is requesting an easement to be placed on both properties for water and sewer before approval. The Raton Public Service and Raton Natural Gas have no issue with the split, and it is recommended by Randy Madison, Chair in the Planning and Zoning Commission. The subdivision falls within the characteristics of the district and easily meets or exceeds the requirements of a C3 general business on a highway servicing the district. I recommend approval to the city commission with the inclusion of the specific recommendation of Raton Water Works.
All righty, any question? My comment, I guess, would have, has Raton Water Works already spoken with the landowner? Are they in agreement with the Raton Way? The easement?
I think this is an estate issue, so.
So I don't know whether Raton Water Works has spoken with the owner specifically or whether it was just with our zoning officer. But they have communicated their, I don't know if you call it a recommendation or what, but to allow for an easement to access water through the one property.
The both properties?
Address 208 would have to access water through address 200. And so they would like to see an easement recorded along with the subdivision.
So you're understanding 208 Canyon has no utilities to it?
It has everything, including sewer, everything but water. Water follows Nevada, and so in order to get the water tap to that building in the future, they would need to cross, they would need to cross the other property that's being created.
Isn't there a water line that runs up Canyon?
I think there is another place where it crosses Canyon, but there isn't one that runs along Canyon, at least in this area.
Yeah, the way I understood it, Mark, it sounded like the water just came down Nevada.
And they hit the gas station and then they tapped it to provide for that warehouse.
Yeah, it says allow for water line to be installed to the building to the north from Nevada. And then it also says the sewer line would be installed from Canyon Road. So it sounds like maybe there's not sewer to the property, according to this letter from Lloyd. I don't know.
I believe sewer already runs down Canyon Drive.
But they need the easement to be able to access a sewer line if there's a problem property as well?
No, they only need the easement to access the water, which is only on Nevada currently.
I do have one question. On the letter from the Planning and Zoning, it says the city of Raton subdivision regulations require a final plat review and approval, which will result in subsequent review by Planning and Zoning. So once, if we approve, then it would have to go back to Planning and Zoning for a final plat review, and then it would be complete?
So it would actually, it'd actually come back again. And so just because you approved this right now, all you're basically doing is saying, we agree with your plan, go get it drawn up and finalized, and then it should be ready to come back.
And on that final plat, it would show all easements?
That's right. Yeah, yeah. And this is your opportunity to say, you also need to do this, or you also need to do that, and then they can incorporate that in their final plan.
My only concern is the easement that the water department wants. And if that's going to be incorporated on the final plat, if that works, I think we're fine with it.
Well, I guess, Mr. Mayor, if the sewer line comes off Canyon, I don't understand why, why they would want to tap the whole gas station line. They just put a new tap and run it in off a canyon. Yeah, I'm a little lost on that one, but I know the existing one comes off Nevada, but having had some property up there in that neighborhood once upon a time, it's different.
I maybe should have brought the utility drawings so I could show you, but they, the one property wouldn't be tapping the other property's line. It's just that the sewer runs along Canyon Drive. There's no issue with that. Both properties have frontage on Canyon Drive. Both of them have direct access to the sewer. It's only the water main that runs along Nevada, doesn't run along Canyon Drive in front of these businesses. And so the northernmost business would need to be able to access their own water tap to the city's main through the property.
So that water line in that neighborhood picks up Francis off the side street in Buck Canyon?
That's correct, yep.
I think it runs down. No, it doesn't, never mind.
There's a little back street.
Well, there's Dale and what's that other one called back there? I know Dale was one of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation for a lot split at 200 Canyon Drive and 208 Canyon Drive with the easement for the water department?
Hold on a second.
Motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You got it through there, Jay. Item E, deliberate an act on Resolution 2024-65, authorizing the certification of the city of Raton's capital asset inventory. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, 2024 annual inventory was performed by RCL on March 12 through 15, and all capital assets acquired by the city after the inventory have been added to the fixed asset database. Surplus items and assets that have reached their useful lives have been approved for disposal per city policy, and the city treasurer has updated the database to reflect the addition of items classified as land, infrastructure, buildings during this fiscal year. The city recommends that you pass this resolution.
Typically, I do give the city commission a comprehensive report. I do not have that ready for approvals, so I don't think that we would be ready to approve the resolution this evening. So that report also includes construction in progress. So I still need to update the database with all of our project-related costs. And then any project that wasn't completed as of June 30, I have to complete the spreadsheets for updating what we term construction in progress. So I still do have a little bit of work to do on the comprehensive report. So when I bring it to you, it'll be similar to years past, where we kind of have those beginning and ending balances for all asset classes, any additions, deletions, and I'll provide all of that to the commission prior to your approval.
So you would prefer we table this?
Postpone. Till then, I'll move to postpone action on Resolution 2024-65 till the next meeting. Second.
Motion and a second to postpone action on Resolution 2024-65. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right.
Just for clarification, that was a motion by Commissioner Schuster and second.
And deliberate an act on Resolution 2024-66, fiscal year 25 first quarter financial report. Mr. Mestes.
Mayor and Commissioner, I yield to City Chief of Staff Michael and Intoducchi.
Mayor and Commissioner, I do have the first quarter report complete, and it's in your packet. As of today, we still have not received the distribution for the October GRT. So I've put in your packet the GRT distributions for the first quarter. So we are, for the first quarter, 2% above our budget projections for grocery seeds. The gas tax comparison, we have not received the October distribution either, but for the previous month of September, we did receive a distribution of $20,833. This was the largest distribution we had received until, since the previous September. So hopefully that trend will continue. I think that towards the end of the summer, we know that we had kind of a strong summer season, especially around Labor Day, so we'll see and continue to monitor this as closely as possible just because we've leveraged those funds towards several of our DOT grants that we've been awarded. And I think we had discussed previously, if we fall short in the Fund 217 for the gas tax, we've budgeted potentially to transfer funds from the general fund to cover any required match. Lodger's tax, that fund actually did quite well in the month of September, so we are about 2.5% year-to-date above the previous year. So that's good. That shows that in the month of September, we collected just shy of $60,000 in lodger's tax revenue. We did have several large events in late August, early September. We will continue to monitor that one as well. With the shortfall that we experienced at the end of the fiscal year, it was about $30,000. You'll see when we get to the financial report. I believe my ending cash balance in lodger's tax currently is about $36,000. So we really kind of didn't start the year with a high reserve balance. So kind of going into these slower months, that'll give us time to build up that reserve. And then come springtime, when we start to get some requests for events, we'll have to kind of review what our funding looks like to get us through the end of the fiscal year. Cannabis excise tax, the distribution is $4,330 for the month of September. I'm still waiting to get a formal report, I guess, from the New Mexico Tax and Rev on the distribution from the prior month. I do believe that that was from a correction or amended return that occurred in the previous fiscal year. So hopefully I can get further information on that. If we look at our financial summary as of September 30, our ending cash balance on the general fund, this will be over 4.5 million, less our 112 reserve gives us available cash of $3,887,807.82. So our general fund GRT revenues are slightly above budget projections. We will continue to monitor that. As you recall, we did kind of budgeted increase this year for grocery seeds because we had been pretty conservative in those estimates in prior years. So as long as we're on target or above, we'll be okay. But kind of going into the winter months, we're always a little concerned because the GRT does tend to taper off. Hopefully we'll have a strong holiday season locally with retail sales, but also we know that the online sales will probably be pretty good as well. General fund revenues were slightly below the target of 25% for the first quarter. But once we do receive the property tax revenues late December, early January, we'll exceed those revenues. Let's see, departmental expenses, we're also below the 25% year-to-date, mainly due to salary savings. We do have vacant positions in the fire department, and I believe one in the police. This first quarter report will be submitted to the Department of Finance by October 31 as our deadline. I think, kind of going back to the lodger's tax discussion, revenues are pretty tight. When I looked at the budget earlier, if we expended everything that we budgeted for this fiscal year, we're showing that we will have fully extended the promotional fund and probably have about $30,000 left in the non-promo. So, you know, if we fall short in those revenue estimates, that really doesn't give us much of a cushion. So that's part of my concern with just some of the building needs that we have. I mean, the welcome center, obviously, we need, we did budget $25,000 at the welcome center, so I think we need to address some heating and cooling issues in that facility. But we do have various issues, convention center, the Schuler. Hopefully we can get an estimate on the carpet and try to move forward with that. But I do only have about $25,000 currently budgeted for the carpet. So I would like to see what the final estimate is on that. As far as other funds go, I don't think I put a copy in your packet, but I have updated our current grant listings. We did talk about it briefly at our financial advisory meeting. We currently have about $22 million in active grants. Have a list of pending, awaiting, awarded, so I will provide you a copy of that for the next meeting. We've been successful at closing out quite a few grants at the end of the fiscal year. I will report that I did get the order submitted today for the senior center oven, the double oven. I will report that I did get the order submitted today for the senior center oven, the double oven. And so hopefully, we can get that delivered. I know they were concerned whether or not they'd have a new oven before Thanksgiving.
Any questions?
Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four sixty-six, fiscal year twenty-five, first quarter financial report.
Motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four sixty-six. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, deliberate an act on resolution twenty twenty-four sixty-seven, budget adjustment number four, fiscal year twenty-five. Michael Ann.
Mayor Commission, upon completing our first quarter report, I do bring to you several budget adjustments. Within the General Fund, I am looking to do some line item adjustments within the airport. One of the grants that I did successfully close out was the CARES Act funding. We actually had three grants for a total of seventy-five thousand that we've been managing for the past four years. And so we've completely expended all of those funds, and I've closed out all of the grants. During that time period, we were using the funds to pay for the utilities at the airport. So we'll need to kind of increase the budget for the utilities, and the city will have to resume paying those costs. So that funding was greatly appreciated. I don't think there will be any future opportunities for the additional funds of that sort. But seventy-five thousand, you know, freed up some other money within the General Fund that we could use for other things. We also have another invoice for the architectural services for the Kearney School project. So I would need to do another temporary transfer to be able to pay the architect. We are moving forward with HUD, and hopefully, we'll be able to start submitting some reimbursement requests for the expenses that we've incurred previous fiscal year and this fiscal year for the VHL and Associates expenses. Other than that, we did receive the funding for the police grants. It is fifty percent of the previous year's allocation. I just need to allocate the funds amongst the different line items that we hit. So its salaries and benefits are covered by the grant. At the previous meeting, you might recall that I did do some adjustments to adjust the electrical vault project at the airport to reflect the actual amounts awarded by the state and federal grants. I did actually omit something that we had budgeted originally. As of June thirty, we had several outstanding reimbursement requests that we had to budget that revenue coming in in July. So when I did the, the actual adjustments, I omitted those, those amounts coming back in. So we had FAA reimbursed us fifty-one thousand four oh three, and the state aviation grant for design of the electrical vault reimbursed us five thousand one hundred and forty. So I would need to increase our revenues to account for that. Otherwise, that created kind of an out-of-balance situation within that fund. Other than that, I am adding the Brownfields grant into our budget for FY twenty-five. That's five hundred thousand dollars. And other than that, just some bank charges for the landfill assurance fund account. I stand for any questions?
Questions?
The bank charges, what was that about?
This is still related to the New Mexico Bank and Trust accounts. So as we're transitioning away from those accounts, those would be the, the bank charges, analysis fees that we've incurred through New Mexico Bank and Trust.
There was that, that many transactions in that account?
This is kind of an estimate. I think their analysis charges are based on the actual balance within the fund. That was one of the reasons why we chose to go within bank, so that we didn't have any fees. It was very difficult with New Mexico Bank and Trust for them to even tell us how the fees were calculated. Some of the fees were per ACH transaction, based on the balances. So hopefully, within the next few weeks, we will transition everything to Inbank, and we will not have any fees of any sort.
Yeah, it was a monthly battle with RPS and the fees and all of that with Inbank.
Not Inbank, yeah.
And this is just an estimate. I mean, it may not be that high if we can get the funds transferred even before the end of this month. But that would be for July, August, September, and part of October.
It seems a little weird, your charges go up because the balance is bigger.
Part of the, part of the, part of the fees, it was about forty-four dollars a month for positive pay. That was kind of a feature to present, prevent fraud. So I think each account was being charged the forty-four dollars at a minimum.
Yeah, any other questions, comments?
Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four sixty-seven, budget adjustment number four, fiscal year twenty-five.
Motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty-four, twenty twenty-four sixty-seven. Further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, City Manager Report, Mr. Mestes.
Mayor Commission, the Raton Regional Economic Development Conference and Summit of Governments was held last week. In addition to identifying some key areas of collaboration for growth of the region with government and non-government partners, we were able to join them in celebrating some big announcements, including major grant awards for transportation, energy and transportation, and to broadband access within the city. With the Big Rocks, the treasurer has been preparing for the audit team that arrives in Raton tomorrow. Both police and fire are heavily recruiting for applicants as we experience routine turnover this time of year. Public Works crews have spent the last couple of weeks patching pothole, maintaining damaged channels, repairing dumpsters, and cleaning up after storms. Would like to thank Don Garcia for training new employees on the street sweeper and other equipment. For engineering, their coordinating work on both the film school and the airport stand by for some upcoming changes. In facilities, as stated earlier, there are issues with heating at the education building, visitor center, and library. We will soon bring forward our strategy for repairs. With the clerk, city clerk is out for training this week. I want to express my thanks to the chief of staff for filling in for her. Our new economic developer has hit the ground running and has started working on a strategy for succession planning of our existing businesses in the city. Well, for mentions and dispatches, a shout out to Al Raton Media Works, Jose Lopez, Better City, Antice, Audrey Godfrey, and Eric Gibson for their work on the Raton Regional Economic Development Conference and Summit of Governments. And finally, my closing thoughts. I was very pleased at the Summit of Governments meeting last week. We had a very good turnout of both elected and appointed officers from Colorado and New Mexico. To everyone who turned out, thank you. The summit was about getting to know each other better and understanding the region's needs more fully, to see where we might achieve economies of scale that will make us more attractive whole to remote workers, investors, businesses, and developers. It's about finding ways to pool and maximize our resources instead of depleting them in an unending race against each other. Most important, it's about sustain our wonderful Western way of life and also improving our quality of life. So our kids will want to stay and raise their kids here too. I would like to thank Mayor Karen Gregor of Trinidad, who immediately offered to host our next gathering of governments in the spring. I believe we're all going to grow from our new collaborative spirit. And before I sign out, I'd like to express for Veterans Day that God bless our boys and girls in uniform, and God bless our ships at sea.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Honeyfield? Commissioner Jacobo? Sheriff Loten? Commissioner Schuster?
Well, I want to thank the mayor, Proten, for the nice little bags of promotional materials she put together for everybody. It was very nice.
Absolutely. And I was in Clovis last week, missed out on all the hoopla here. But the director of the commitment center there said to, again, thank you and Jose for helping out and getting their system up that they're very happy with, and they appreciated you all's help. So anytime we can get a plug in, it's great. All right. This meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.
I'd like to get everybody to sign the, the resolution for the financial report.